Out of this.
That was, that is the motion.
On the floor.
And a second. Yeah, and let's vote on it and be done with it.
Any other comments?
Mike would like.
Oh, yes, Mr. Malone. Would you make sure the mic is on when you talk, Mike?
I'm Mike Malone from Wooddale Ball. I'm here representing the chamber tonight. I just want to tell you guys, originally it was monument signs, the whole town, okay? The moratorium or the stoppage of that was in the intersection area, both Wooddale Road and Irving Park corridors, in the area where the intersection study was going on because we weren't really sure what was going to happen there, so we weren't going to force them to put down signs when we didn't know what was going to happen yet. The chamber supported that at the time, and I just want to tell you, do a couple of things. When you pass this, make sure those that still have pole signs know that they're no longer going to be acceptable and how long they have to convert them to monument signs.
I got it.
So that's, just make sure that it's clear. Obviously, I mean, he can't discuss it, but I can, but Mr. Lewitin has a sign that may be not able to be had anymore, and he didn't know about it. So the more we can tell people, the better off we're going to be. But I think there is some confusion when however Sweet Baby Ray's ended up up there and a couple other ones in towns where they're replacing faces. They need to be told that that's not the preferred sign that you're looking for, and by ordinance eventually they'll have to take it down. They may still say replacing the face is going to be cheaper, and now worry about it five years down the road, but if they're aware of it, at least, at least you can't, they can't say that you didn't tell them, you know? So that's, that's all I'm asking is that you make sure that, maybe send a letter to those that still have pole signs, so that they're aware of what they have to work towards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Noack, now, what is the ordinance right now? We've got three years or five years before the sign?
It depends on when your sign was installed. If it was installed after 2006, you'd have until 2011. If it was installed before 2001, you'd have until 2009.
Okay, so again, all we're looking at tonight is to make sure that until next week, when we make this official and a full council, that we're not going to allow any additional signs go up in the meantime. Did they come in for a permit with this, and you had to give it to them?
Yeah, they just came in for a face change, but that was the end of last year. And there was no reason not to give it to them because it didn't impact them at that time.
But you didn't tell us this wasn't part of it. That was the intent, and we weren't advised that, hey fellows, you left something out. So hopefully we'll change this with the new zoning laws anyway. Okay, we have them, Alderman, please.
I got a question, Ranj. I understand when that second sign went up, the face change, those were two separate parcels. When the lots get consolidated, doesn't the ordinance overriding that one sign, one parcel?
The fact that the permit and everything was let prior to that, prior to that consolidation.
Say that again?
They had the, the building permit sign, you know, they had a building permit to replace the face of the sign, the faces of the sign, and that was done prior to, and prior to the consolidation of the lots and the business development plan.
Okay, Alderman, please, one more question.
So in other words, if there's five lots on Irving Park, if I bought them individually and put a sign on each one, then came to the council and said, hey, I want to consolidate all these lots, I get to keep all five signs, is that what you're telling me? Or do we need to change that right now?
I don't want to tell you that because I'm completely against that, as far as I'm concerned, if...
Do we need to amend the motion?
You know, he has, he has two separate parcels there, which you have to understand is he has the one...
He had.
Yeah, he has the one on the, for the restaurant, and then the other ones are the ones that have the banquet facility.
It's now one lot. I'm just trying to stop this in the future.
Well, if that be the case, then we probably have to take a look at it, but that would be something that I believe is technically covered under the sign code with respect to the distance between signs, and I thought that that distance was approximately 300 feet unless it was, unless it was an existing sign, et cetera. So there are a lot of other items to be included in this, but...
There's not 300 foot between those two signs though, are there? There's not 300 feet between those two signs?
Because of the fact that, you know, they are, they are separate parcels, and because of the fact that it was done prior to...
They were separate parcels, and it was done before it was made one parcel. Okay, Alderman Caddella.
I'm, I'm all for taking this section out, but there might be one thing we want to consider, and the mayor brought up a valid point. Until we've officially decided as a council that 2A or any grade separation is done, should we, just kind of picking everybody's brain here, should we consider that instead of removing the section entirely, we, we keep it with its main concept of the amortization schedule, but we add to it that on any existing signage in this area, no new signs that do not comply with the future, the, the current monument regulations, no new signs can be built if they're not monuments, and no refacing or other modification of existing signs can happen in this area if they do not fall into line with the, with the ordinance for monument only. So what this does is it allows anybody with a question of what's happening with Irving and with the business in this area and with potentially non-conforming signage, it doesn't force them to change this until we've made official policy that this grade separation's not going to happen. But this does stop them from spending any kind of money or putting up a sign that, that simply does not belong, I think in the eyes of the majority of the city council. So, once again, I'm just kind of, I'm kind of looking for feedback on that. I don't mean to make that an official amendment to the motion, but to see if anybody else agrees.
I, I think you've hit the nail on the head, and I think, yeah, I'd like to ask the motioner if he'd like to make that amendment.
I want to know, I want to know why we issue a permit for a sign before he even came in to planning and zoning for variance. I want to know why that happened, because now any business that comes in before they go planning and zoning, we're going to issue a sign permit before the planning and zoning approve it? There's a problem there, guys. There's a big problem. Because we issued a sign permit before he came here and proposed his variance. We gave him a sign permit, which I thought was unwrong.
Thank you, Chairman Chalky. I agree with you, Alderman Chalky, I mean Alderman Wesley, but there's no way for us to know what someone is planning if he doesn't tell us, let us in on it. There is, there was another way to, to deal with that, and that could have been at the time that we had the lot consolidation, there could have been part of the, part of the motion could have been that the sign be removed and only one sign be located for that property. It could have been a combined sign for either, let's say, Sweet Baby Ray's and restaurant and catering, and, or that pole sign could have been eliminated through motion and have that become just a monument sign, because that was talked about.
But my question is, why did not staff point that out to us before we approved Sweet Baby Ray's variance? No one had brought that to us before, that they came in for a sign permit, and we're going to give them a sign permit before Planning and Zoning Board. I'm sorry, that's wrong. From what I'm concerned, I'm not, there's a motion on the floor, call the roll, and let's get on with it.
You, you need, you need to read our minds ahead of time and let us know about stuff like this.
Would you call the, Mr. Mayor, did you want to say one last thing and we'll call the vote?
Two points. Number one, does a face change require a sign permit?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And second, by law, doesn't this have to go before Plan Commission's EBA? Variations to the sign code, adoption of a sign code?
The, this would have to do with, with changing the ordinance, and I don't believe it would have full impact on the sign code, but that would certainly be something to discuss with the, with the city attorney. I don't believe it would be necessary because you're just going to be adding to or deleting from the ordinance, and I don't think it's specific enough to focus in on the, on the, on the new sign code that was adopted.
Okay, I'd like to call the vote, please. Alderman, please, last question.
I'd like to make an amendment on this motion. Upon lot consolidation, there should only be one sign per lot, so if there's two or three lots that are consolidated and there's three signs, two of them have to come down and one remains.
Would the initial motioner like to make that addition?
I agree.
Okay, call the, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman, please, I would just remind you, we have another provision in the sign code. If you're on two streets, but you're one lot of record, you get two signs. Are you changing that as well? Always people on corner lots...
That's different. That's a special circumstance.
With two signs.
You're right, Mayor, and I, I didn't think of it. I'd say no, but the motion changed.
Okay, let's, would you call the roll, please, on this one?
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin? Alderman Chalky?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
No.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Okay, the point is to make sure that there are no new or redesigned or any other pole signs going up, and if we have to come back with us with a new provision in the ordinance, so that that will be carried out. Oh, number seven is, does anybody else have anything they'd like for the next meeting, by the way? Anything for future meetings?
I don't know if it falls under your committee, but I agree with the mayor, we need to make that decision on 2A or 2, for we can only have this discussion any longer. I don't know if it falls under yours or what committee.
If legally we can and keep that money, I would agree. Mr. Mayor?
I believe traditionally that has been under Public Works. But I'm not positive of that.
It's really been all over the field. I think the latest though was under Community and Economic Development, the last time I saw it. I could be mistaken, it could be a Public Works.
Yeah, either is fine.
Okay.
Alderman Lewitin, would you mind having that on your agenda for next time?
Okay, Mayor, does that mean that I will not be able to handle it?
Given your situation, I think it should be under Public Works.
Are we agreed? Okay, I think staff has direction. Anything else? If not, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn Planning, Zoning and Billing Committee of March 27th. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second? All in favor? Motion carries.
Finance is next. I'd like to call them in order, make note that same people are still present. I need a motion to approve amendments March 13, 2008.
Make the motion.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Reporting recommendation, final budget review, all funds. Maggie, I believe they all got the revised today.
Yes.
Okay. We did complete the, I should say, the finance department completed all the changes that we discussed. There was a couple of changes in since our last, as a full committee. Maggie will guide us through the couple of changes that we made in the budget, but I, I hope that we could finalize this today and get it off to the library and have our public hearing down the line. So Maggie, if you want to take it from there, I appreciate that.
Chairman Wesley, I'm not sure, did you say the library? Something about the library?
Does the library get a copy of it for a public review?
No, no, it stays here at the clerk's office. Public inspection takes here, takes place here at the city hall.
Okay, because I believe it was on the TV that you can review it at the public library or the website too.
Okay. Okay, what you have in front of you is a rather thick stack of papers that go in your budget books. These are all the revised, corrected, reprinted budget worksheets, so that you've got a good, clean, final copy. You also have a memo from me, and attached to that is a listing of what pages are being replaced. Two things that I did not have on that sheet are the Equipment Replacement Fund and the Police Pension Fund. When I looked at those, they didn't seem to have printed correctly, so I reprinted them for you. They're not listed on that, on that instruction sheet, but you do have them in your packets. Probably the most important part of that packet is the Wooddale Budget Summary, and you'll see now that we finished all of the funds of the city, including Special Service Area, which you didn't have before. Essentially, what's changed in the general fund is that we have a deficit, or we have a surplus of $24,808. If you recall, when we started this budget process, we were like $453,000 deficit, so a lot of progress has been made. But since the last meeting in March, at March 13th, we did get final numbers from IPBC on our health insurance. We learned that we could pay the fourth installment on our computer software in this current fiscal year, so we didn't need to put it in the budget for next fiscal year. We had those kinds of changes. Ultimately, probably the biggest impact is that instead of that $230,000 transfer that was going to be made for motor fuel tax to the general fund, we've got that down to $135,000 by using those savings that were made on the, on the health insurance and the changes in the inter-fund transfers. The funds all end up with healthy fund balances. The general fund balance, we're estimating will be 9.1 million at the end of 2009, which is an increase. Not a big one, but an increase over where we think will be at the end of this fiscal year, by about $30,000. So I think the departments are very pleased with this budget. We feel that the budget allows the city to provide all of the services that it had been providing and increase some of them. For instance, we did have storm sewer maintenance. At one point, we were reducing that by 10 or 20,000. Now it's back up to its original proposal of 80,000. Every time we, we saw a cost saving, we attempted to restore things that had been in the initial cut, in the, in the initial phase of cuts. So I think this is overall a very good budget. It accomplishes much of what the city wanted to accomplish. And you'll, if you look at the fourth page of the general fund summary, just for comparison, the state recommends that the city has eight months of fund balance, eight months of expenditures and fund balance. So Wooddale would have to have $7.3 million, and Wooddale will have 9.1. Basically, what this tells you is if there were to be a slowdown in state revenues, for whatever reason, or a slowdown in collecting real estate taxes, Wooddale would have a cushion to continue operating at 100%, meet all of its obligations.
Okay. I need to make a motion on the floor to approve the final budget for we can schedule a public hearing on the budget. That's my motion on the floor. There's a second on the floor, question on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'll have it a roll call then.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Chalky?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Motion carries. I just want to make one other statement. I, I'd like to take my hat off to the staff and the department heads that worked very hard to get this budget done and did outstanding job of getting everything together for me. I'll tell you one thing, for me being the first time going through a budget, working with the staff, they did what we asked them to, they did the cuts, and I just want to commend the staff in my behalf that they, I appreciate all their hard work in that budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Wesley. It was our pleasure and privilege.
Thank you. Items of future meetings, water rate billing analysis, business license code device. Anything else that needs to be added on that? Alderman Chalky?
Just what we spoke about a little bit to, when we're looking at the water rates, to consider a conservation type of water rate. We'll have the, you say we will have the software May?
Alderman Chalky, depends on how quickly we get the Springbrook software on the utility billing side installed, but as soon as we are able to extract data, then we can come up with a rate analysis. And certainly we could do, we could certainly set the rates so that they were geared towards encouraging conservation. That certainly is a possibility.
Will we need to do something now and then change it again in May, or do we put it off till then, or how does that work?
May of this year, May of 2008? No, the rates normally are changed in September.
Okay.
And first build out in November. So I think you have a, a good amount of time to discuss the various scenarios, and we will try to give you more than one to choose from, the goal being to make sure that the water and sewer fund is healthy financially, but if we, if we can achieve other goals with the rates, that, that will be part of our focus.
Thank you very much.
Then I need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Like to call Public Works Committee to order, let the minutes reflect that all members that were here before are still here. First off, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next item is Irving Park, Irving Park Road Corridor Utilities. Mr. Mermis, you wanted to make a comment on that?
Yeah, I just want to note that Mr. Home is not going to be here tonight. Obviously, he is pretty sick tonight. Hopefully, he'll be here tomorrow, but he's not going to be here tonight, so I'm going to take over for him. As far as the Irving Park Corridor Utilities, staff was asked to look into the possibility of burying these utility lines. We had looked into this once before, I believe in the summer of 2005. It is an expensive project, to say the least. ComEd is willing to, to help us out a little bit, but the city is going to incur some, some significant costs here. We can get ballpark figures, but if that's the council's direction, but it is going to be a pretty big cost. It's large.
Alderman Caddella?
Actually, I was talking with Itasca's mayor, and she had mentioned the, the ComEd Rider 28, and Alderman Police and I discussed it, and then we met with Gary. It was, it was my understanding that Rider 28 was, was a, a project or a way that ComEd has devised to be able to, you know, pull this off in such a way that it is affordable. I thought it was a, a method of dividing out the total cost of the construction, equally out with the ComEd users within the municipality based on their usage, so the large industrial places might incur most of the cost, but even so, split out between everybody, hopefully almost insignificant. Am I wrong?
Let's not forget that, that ComEd's not the only players in this game. There's also other wires above there that aren't just ComEd, there's Comcast, whoever else is up there, and that was the major cost that we came across last time. It's not just ComEd. So we can, we can come back with some, you know, hopefully some ballpark figures if this is a route we want to go, but there is going to be some costs to the city that could be pretty expensive.
Alderman Chalky?
Yeah, last time we did discuss it, it was over a million dollars. So I don't know if there's a way of handling that fee, divide it up or what, but it'd be great to do, but I don't know if we can.
We actually did apply for a grant for it in '05, and we didn't receive it.
Alderman Wesley?
Jeff, I suggest then that we don't pursue this anymore, but I, I would like you still look for grant money for it. I mean, if the grant comes available, put in for it. I mean, we got denied once, maybe if they see us, put it in for it again. I mean, they might say, okay, they really interested in it, so if you could still look for the grant, if it comes available again, that would be probably the optional goal, because I'll tell you, a million dollars, that's a lot of money to bury cables, I'll tell you that right now. Because I remember that, sitting out here, and there was a lot of talk on that, so.
Alderman Caddella?
I was just going to ask Mr. Manager to revise that million dollar number to, to today's economy. Is that something staff could do without expending a lot of time, just so we know maybe where that might be today?
I think we can come back with some numbers before we drop this off the table completely.
Yeah, obviously, the number hasn't gone down, but it, before we, before we drop it off completely, you know, maybe I'd like to find out what it, what it would cost so that we've got a number that maybe we could begin to consider for either next year's or the years after budget.
Yeah, I can work on some numbers and then bring it back to the next committee.
Is that a motion? Do we need to make a, I think we need to make a motion on that.
No, I don't think we need a motion. Staff's got direction, we can just leave it.
Okay. Anything else on that? All right, next item up is annual landscaping maintenance project. I'll defer to Mr. Mermis.
Okay, on March 18, 2008, the city of Wooddale received three bids for landscaping maintenance project. The bids were open and read publicly. These bids were based on a three-year annual program. The lowest bid was classic landscape, and that was for $25 per hour for a total of three years. I believe the, the reason we did it for three years was a cost-saving measure. If any, really, if anybody's any questions, I feel more comfortable answering questions than going over the memo, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Alderman Wesley?
I have one question. Where is the, I, I thought we also asked the staff down the line when stuff goes off a bid, a whole list of who, when, only three bids went out, or who else, who else got bids? And we, we awarded a three top, but I mean, do we only send out three bids?
No, I know for a fact we didn't only send out three bids. I can come back with that sheet at the council meeting on Thursday with who we sent the bids to, but I know for a fact that it was more than three.
Okay, because, you know, I just want to make sure we did have the opportunity of, you know, everyone, I just like to see the list of bids before we award a contract. And also, with this contract, if it's, if they don't do their job and is, if we award this contract and they don't do their job, are we going to put in that, contracts avoid like Clark mosquitoes that we've been not signing three-year contract a year, is it going to be written that way?
I believe, I believe that's the standard.
Well, I don't know if that's the standard we're going by all the time, but I still want that in there that, you know, I'm not going, I'm not happy with three-year contracts to one firm, I, I just not. It's, it's just my thought, I don't know how the council feels.
But you understand the reasoning.